Okay, folks, welcome. Go ahead and turn on your phones. I'd like to welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to a session. But first of all, we did have the Board of E and R from Grand County. The Board of E and R is comprised of Board Commissioners. We did open that this morning, and we've now come out of recess and would ask that we have a motion to adjourn. Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion or comment? Okay, all approved. All opposed? Motion carries. This time, we'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Grand County Board of Commissioners to order. And with that, I would like to remind all members of the Board of Commissioners to be advised hereby that their duty under the State Government Ethics Acts to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflict and further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this Board of Commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. This time, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Williams and ask if you do the implication for us, then ask Commissioner Warshley, Mrs. Lees, in the place of allegiance to be always being interviewed.
That's correct. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful fine day. Lord, we know our struggle without you. We wouldn't have any season, Lord, and we know that all seasons are needed, Lord, and we just thank you, Lord, that you test Grand County by the beauty that we have here, Lord, and we just thank you, Lord, for the good news that we've heard of people being saved this week, Lord. That's the main thing, Lord, if we don't ever confess our sins and get saved, Lord, we'll die in a burning and go to burning hell, Lord. We just ask you, Lord, that you can be with each one that's lost in our community, Lord, and that you touch them before it's too late, Lord. And, Lord, we just ask you, yours is for us as we conduct the county business, that we would do in place of you, Lord, in your own name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You can see. At this time, everyone has a copy of the agenda before you. I'd like to ask if there is a motion for approval of agenda. Do you have a motion? Yes.
We have a possibly an item about a road right away on Ford Street that will be discussed.
Okay. Is that the open session? If we could do that under... Okay, Ms. Clark, we have to ask please to do that.
Just have a discussion of items and that are new or obvious as we can address it at the very bottom.
Okay. All right, Commissioner, what was that again? Just a discussion of...
Discuss a road right away, easement problem or property on Ford Street.
Okay, on Ford Street. All right. That's one change. Any others? All right, we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented with that change.
Summoned.
We have a motion.
Okay.
All right, all approved. All opposed? Thank you. This time, we'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular workshop meeting minutes of March 17th, the continued meeting of March 25th, the emergency meeting of March 28th, and April 7th, special meeting of April 3rd, and open minutes from closed sessions July 13th through February 2014.
Summoned.
Have a motion, but have a second. Any discussion or comment? All approved? All opposed? Thank you. This time, we'd like to recognize Becky Garland for her financial support.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have before you the financial highlights, and these are carried forward through today. Our final, on page one, our final general fund cash balance for the month of March was five million six hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's an increase from this time last year at right at four point eight million. When you look down at the bottom of the page, our cash balance at the beginning of the year was three point nine eight million, so we have been able to make some strides in our cash balance. Of course, we have three months left, and that will be a slide, but we're hoping that we can end the year at better than what we had this time last June 30th of 2013, which was three point four seven six million dollars. Page two, our collections in real and DMV taxes. The current year taxes for our collections of eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. This time last year, we collected seventy-two seven, and we're tracking a little bit behind two years ago, but ahead of three years ago, so we're staying up on where we need to be. Our prior year taxes for the month were twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's past due tax collections for a total of one hundred and thirteen six hundred and ninety-seven, which is much better than the past three-year trends. Our DMV taxes, which includes BTS of twenty-six three forty-seven, were thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. If you'll flip two more pages, when you see the green on the bottom of the page, you'll see that our tax collection rate for the year is at ninety-four point one one percent. It's a little bit behind this time last year. We were at nine five point nine. Part of that's because we have a higher levy this year, so it's harder to get traction on your collection rate when the higher levy. Our tax collections for past due taxes, if you look at what we've got in receivables right now on current taxes, these are technically past due as of January 5th, are three hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. That's for the current year ready. And then the past 10 years that we can make collection efforts on are at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And I'm going to have you flip to the very back page for just a moment. I'm going to give you some comparisons where we were and where we are. Page eight, just to give you some frame of reference, at the end of June of 2013, we had past due taxes of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, and as I just stated, we have, we're now at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so we've had collections of three hundred and ten thousand five hundred. And I've made like a little bracket for the years that were truly past due, we've collected a hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and thirty-nine in past due taxes. I'm very proud to report that, and I hope that number continues to rise, because that was one of the priorities that we had in budget last year was to really work those old balances. And this spreadsheet will give you kind of a breakdown on how that collection has resolved itself and what the collections were for each year that are past due.
Becky, may I ask you a question? I know that I was there during the budget process last fiscal year. What was that line item we set as a target for us?
We targeted three hundred thousand. I was hoping to get two hundred, so I think I'm gonna exceed what I was hoping for, but I always try to target higher just so we have something to work for. So I'm really, I'm not totally happy, but I'm very pleased, and I think, and I'm really appreciative of the work that the tax collector has put forth in that.
That was a half a million dollars.
Yeah, it was...
That was outstanding.
If you want to flip back to page five or just to give you an idea of where we are in total revenues and expenditures for the month, we are, for the month of March, we had eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, and some change in total revenues, which was a little bit lower than this time last year. But our expenditures were at one million to around twenty-two thousand, which was about forty thousand less than this time last year. So we had an operating deficit for the month of four hundred and one, and that's pretty much in line with what I was expecting, so I wasn't unhappy. I don't like to have deficits, but I know this time of year we're gonna run into deficit because the collections on current taxes begin to slow down, and other revenue streams begin to dry up. This is about the time that we start really having to work off of reserves and local dollars because most of your federal and state dollars begin to dry up at the end of the ninth month, and that's the way they're geared. So that's kind of where we are. Our current, if you turn to page six, our current surplus is at two point one million, and it will be two million one hundred and twenty-four thousand. This time last year, we were at two million one hundred and thirty-two thousand, so we are lagging just slightly behind this time last year. But you'll notice our revenues, we've got about nine hundred and forty-one thousand less in revenues, but also nine hundred and thirty-three thousand less in expenditures, and that is because of capital projects. The worst news we had so far for March was, if you flip to page seven, was our sales tax revenue. Our sales tax revenue was at the lowest level I have seen in probably the five years I've been here, seventy-five thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars, and I nearly had a heart attack. But I began to dig, and I listened to the NCACC fearless forecast conference call last Tuesday or Wednesday, and this was a statewide problem. Rebecca Troutman said that everybody's gonna see a big sharp drop in sales tax revenue. She said, "Think back two months, and we were in February, we were in some of the worst weather, we could possibly beat them." And so the NCACC says, their feel is that the recent dip slow flow was not a, something that could be controlled, but people were not out spending money because they couldn't get out. It was just the weather was so foul. And so they're hoping and projecting that that's going to actually bounce back in next month. That has promised into fourteen thousand on the deficit, and we had actually rebounded. We worked under a deficit all year in sales and use tax till last month. We got back into the black, get this back into the red as far as our sales tax revenue is concerned. They are projecting, just as we think budget, they're projecting that statewide we'll see about four and a half to five percent growth in sales tax. I'm not gonna budget for that. I'm gonna probably budget, or from in my revenue projection, flat sales tax projection, but even take it down a tad because of the issues with the unknown, with Stanley plant closing. And of course, that's what Rebecca Troutman advised. She said, "If you have other local issues that are bearing on you, you need to be cautiously optimistic or cautiously pessimistic, whichever way your local economy could go." And I would rather, and when I'm projecting revenues, protect a little low because I would like earthly surprises. Any questions on the highlights?
Becky, I would imagine it's probably a little bit premature to start looking into the what ifs with yard and standard furniture, but this board will realize, you know, that we're going very soon into the budget cycle, and, you know, it's probably gonna be the most difficult time to have with this whole process. So I think it is premature. We'll wait and hope that things turn around with that, but we are planning to start looking as forward about the impact, which may not be completely a vivid picture to us right away, but we know that it would have a tremendous impact, two hundred and twenty people in Grand County losing their employment. So we'll look to the positive and start looking at our budget, trying to plan for the works.
Right. I'm hopeful that by the time we start our budget workshops in May, that we'll have some more definitive answers, and I can tweak my numbers from there. But I'm the eternal pessimist thinking, and I have to be, so that's what I'm gonna be kind of working for. I did give you a budget report about department, and most of our budgets are running pretty close. I mean, as accounting, we should be at twenty-one percent of our budget remaining, and if you flip to the last page, we're twenty-eight percent. I've tried to go ahead and cover debt service and any appropriations that I know that are gonna have to be made or do at March 31st, or as I actually projected it on into the middle of this month. We do have a couple of departments registered deeds. I did an amendment last month, but there's, you know, this is one positive thing, is that there's more property being turned over in the county, which is a good thing, which kind of depletes the registered deeds budget just a tad, but there's revenue that goes in behind it, so in May, I'll bring another budget amendment. Sheriff's Department, they're working really, really hard to stay within their budget, and I think the sheriff and I have been meeting a couple of times, and I think that with some things that he's implementing, he's gonna, he's gonna come in right at budget. Jail is gonna be a tough one because of all of the inmates that we had earlier, a couple of months ago, who've had some heavy, heavy medical expenses, so that may be one that we may have to do a year-end amendment on. I'm still kind of holding on it just to make sure. Our larger departments like DSS and Health Department are hanging right in there, and I'm just, you know, we had a department meeting on Thursday, and I was just, I tried to continue to beat the drum of holding the line on spending, and, you know, all the departments are very committed to that, so I just did. I could even use a line item by the department if you need some more detail, but you can certainly give me a call. I do have some budgetary projections just to enlighten you about, just so that we can be thinking about and thinking forward as we go into budget and the budget workshops. We are gonna have a sizable increase in our health insurance premiums. Part of, a big part of that is that we had some pretty hefty claims this last year, and that has, that's created a shortfall of what Blue Cross or whoever we wound up with, whoever's quoting this is looking at our claims history. So I'm thinking that we're gonna have an increase in our expenditures for health insurance of about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We're working on a lot of different options. We met a week ago Friday, and we've got several options on the table. This is probably the worst-case scenario right here, so that'll be something we'll be really hammering on, and then when we get into budget hearings, we'll be laying all these different proposals out for the board to consider on how they want to, how you want to handle that. We think that our estimated property tax revenue that we can budget from is about five million nine hundred and thousand dollars. If, if we lost all the Stanley tax revenue, which the hope is is they'll sell and the new owners will pick that up, they pay that, that amount's about eighty-five thousand a year, and, but, you know, so what I'm gonna be doing is kind of holding on that tax figure just like I'm gonna be with the sales tax until we kind of know one, and we've got about three weeks before we have to know that final answer. But those were the biggest challenges we faced this year. We still have no word on retirement rates. There's apparently some kind of a disagreement going on in Raleigh with the retirement system. I think they're trying to work out a deal with the General Assembly to give retirees a little bit more of a cost of living increase, which could impact everybody's rates, but there's no clear answer on that at this point. But those are just some of the areas that we're, you know, that we're gonna have to be really working with as we go into budget. Any questions? I have one other item, and this has to do with EMS. Their flooring has not had a buffing or a big clean in a couple of years, and the EMS director brought me a quote to do the entire EMS base, which is about, well, over twenty-one hundred square feet, of about eighteen hundred dollars to do the floors. He's asking that we do this before year-end. His budget's in really good shape. He's got, he hasn't had to spend as much on medical supplies or equipment this year, and has done really well on his fuel consumption, so that's one item he asked for the board to consider. And then he's also asked for the board to also consider adding some insulation to the building, which I know nothing about, so that may be a conversation that him and Mr. Cable needs to have. He said that would cost about twenty-two hundred square feet. So if you guys could just kind of add that to your list of things to consider, then we probably need to try to get the floors done, if possible, before the end of June, so just something for you. Thank you.
Have you been hearing anything on the nine one one funds?
Yes. They're still under the same funding formula. We have not gotten our allocation, you know, the final on what our allocation is. We get about sixteen thousand five hundred dollars a month. I'm going to predict that we'll lose a little bit because we spent about seventy-eight thousand last year, so we're, we've got around two hundred and eighty thousand in the account right now, so I'm expecting that to dip some, but the same formula applies, so if we do not spend our balance down, they will continue to cut our funding. So I think we've got some items on the agenda that have to do with implementing some upgrades and as well as replacement of some equipment that's obsolete, that's kind of lonely obsolete that is dangerously ready to go out so that we can work on some of that spin-down funding in the year.
There is some push for, in the short session this year, for counties to be able to obtain greater flexibility in the use of these nine one ones again.
And that would be nice.
It would be very nice because, you know, it's, the rules changing, and so that's something that we're lobbying for ahead for in Raleigh, to be able to have that flexibility once again.
Well, you know, the issue of keeping ambulances on the road, we don't want that sneaking up again. And I'd rather even try to be very aware of that, about trade impact, so I hope everything's riding well with that so that we will be able to afford, run the horse to death, do such and trade that with that. All right, so that, you think that will be a short session issue, Rick?
That is the indication, as a legislature, I know the NCACC is there definitely pushing it. Whenever we're down there, May 28th, we'll certainly be talking with our legislators about that.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and tell, Senator Davis, we had opportunity to be in a meeting with him, and walked out of the meeting with him, and the marching orders that they received is a two percent cut across the board, so, and if I hear, you know, that kind of thing and is, you know, what are the repercussions being, what are being of counties? So that's usually what happens, so that's another thing to start, to start thinking about, and then to wonder, you know, how much they're gonna do in this sort of short session. So they're saying that it will be a short session indeed, but then again, it may not, so.
And I really hope that they will flex that nine one one funding because it gets down to, you have to dissect the fund bill that is the nine one one fund bill, and if you do not allocate that to suit them, then they're gonna try to disallow it, and it's ridiculous because that's taxpayer money that we're supposed to be using for the benefit of taxpayers, and it doesn't sit well.
Right, true. Did you need clarification on the revenue about the RFPs?
Yes, yes. As you recall, you voted, I think, in early February to order a new ambulance, and I just need clarification because for some reason I was absent when that motion was made. I'm guessing that you wanted me to seek financing for it because it's gonna be delivered probably in June. I tried not to, if you go out too far too quickly, then they're gonna renew all those commitments, but I'm just, I'm asking if you would like for me to go out and do financing on that and for me to seek, I would like to seek financing not only for our local banks, but also BB and T governmental finance and one other finance company, just to, just to put a little pressure on interest rates.
It takes forever to get one, though. Yeah, that would be, I would be very much in favor of that, and at least, you know, have it cop and prime, ready to go.
Right.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Ms. Garland? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the way that you've got these reports for us, too. Helps me out tremendously. This time, we'd like to recognize Mr. Rick Davis and June Ward of the JCPC. Welcome to y'all, and good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. How y'all doing today? Good? Busy day, I'm here. You've got a long agenda, so I'll make my comments brief. Most of you, I think, are familiar with JCPC Council for Grand County. There's X number of members of the council that you appoint each year, some being required positions that represent different agencies and required agencies, and some being at large position. The county receives an amount of money each year to provide funding for programs that work with, with young people who may be having some problems, and I've invited our providers to come tonight to share with you briefly about what their program does. And Ms. Judy Ward, who was our original consultant, she'll share with you about some things statewide and in particular, the things that take place in Grand County. So if it's okay with you, Ms. Edwards, I'd like to give you a little handout that shows the recommended programs for this coming fiscal year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
As you can see there, for 2014, 2015, and of course, all of this is dependent upon action by our General Assembly, but the projected revenue for this coming fiscal year is fifty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's shaded there in the bottom left. That's the same amount of funds that we've gotten last year and even possibly the year before. As I mentioned, we have four program providers, and by the way, this recommendation was approved by the council at the last meeting last week, so we wanted to go ahead and present to you guys about the match that is required for Grand County. It's a 10% match, and I know that budget deliberations and considerations are coming up here real, real soon, so I wanted to get this into your hands and so that you'd have the opportunity to look at it. So at this point in time, I'd just like to introduce our representatives from the program providers that we have, and we'll first start with Hawthorne Heights, and the representative is Mr. Matthew Ramsey. So Matthew, if you'd come on up and share with us briefly on that.
Welcome, Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you. I have been a youth care worker at Hawthorne Heights for the past four, four and a half years. We are a group home for teenagers. We're a runaway shelter. Kids can come at any time, day or night, you know, they can send themselves in for up to three days. Involved in the JCPC, we actually keep them for up to ninety days for their stay. Basically, we're just, you know, we're the caregivers for them, take them to their appointments, school them back, and that kind of, they make sure they go to their therapy and everything that, so it's kind of a good introduction.
I'm familiar with the Hawthorne Heights, you know, both the education side and everything else, and I'm thankful that it's there because otherwise, and I'm not gonna go into all the technicality, but we have a slight lack of services in the West, and I'm just glad that we're able to have that information, and I know, I've known students that have been there. I know that, you know, the relevance of what you folks do there, so it's good. Do you have any questions, folks, for Mr. Ramsey in Hawthorne Heights? Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next representative for our program provider, Project Challenge, and that is Mr. Sean Creel, and then after Sean comes, Pay Setters with Valerie Castle will come up and talk about the program.
Welcome.
Happy.
How are y'all? Good. Hi, labor for Project Challenge, I'm the district supervisor here in the 30th district. I hope many of y'all are familiar with what Project Challenge is. We are a youth service and restitution program. I believe we've been... I believe we've been serving Graham County for nearly eighteen years now. And what we do is, we get referrals, all of our referrals come from the court, and we basically supervise, track, report back all the community service that is allocated by the participants that we work with for the court. We also provide restitution services for the youth that we work with at a rate of five dollars per hour. So if they get ordered community service and restitution, then that will, they work that through us, and we could check, and it comes back to the clerk of court, which then pays the victim. So, yeah, this year, this year, we've served about six kids, and we're hoping to serve about nine more. We said we'd serve about fifteen for this year, so we really appreciate the ten percent. I know in the past, we've had to, in income service, we've had to raise the match, and so we're really appreciative of the ten percent that you guys have given us in the past couple of years, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions?
Who had your position before you, man?
I'm sorry?
Who had your position before you?
Before me, as program, so what exactly did you ask? Who was over the, as district supervisor? Before me, it was Lisa Bates, before her, a gentleman named Ed. And then as the coordinator for here in the county, it was Dylan. Hargit, Dylan Hargit. And then Dylan was here, and then I came on, and it's kind of changed over the last three, four years, but it was Dylan, and I was here for about four and a half, five years.
Great, what was the one that we used to make there?
Maybe Gil Hargit, if you're thinking about Gil, Gil Hargit.
Yeah, and Gil was.
He was with Pay Setters.
Yeah, Gil was with Pay Setters, and what's great is, we've had the opportunity, that I have, over the last eight and a half, nine years, built a work real close to Pay Setters down in Hawthorne, and even Joey down at Mount Hues, so it's great.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. So you're gonna try and replace Gil Hargit?
There's no one who could replace Gil Hargit.
I know, I miss him tremendously.
He was a good man. I'm Valerie Castle of Western Carolina, Pay Setters. I'm actually, Dylan Hargit, which is Gil's son, who used to work for Project Challenge, is my significant other. So I'm stepping up to the plate and working with the kids for Pay Setters. We work on interpersonal skills, and we work on wilderness and life skills with the youth that we work with. Once a week, we're down here with Joey over at the academy and get the kids out of class and get them outside and move in a little bit, teaching some different interpersonal skills, respect is the big one right now, communication, things of that nature. We really do appreciate the ten percent. It would, it would take a lot more of our time in order to raise the ten percent in order to serve as well as we do. So paying the ten percent actually really helps us out.
Do you still have your competence courses, that area there?
The what?
The competence course.
Oh, yeah, the Alpine Tower and all the, yes, we still have it over in Warren. Every year, Joey gets to bring them out, well, twice a year for a field trip, and we do work with a lot of the court-involved youth, and we bring them out on hikes and rafting adventures, camping, things of that nature, and out to the adventure center to climb the tower, so.
I think we still have the one in Cherokee, we'll go to one, one week out of the year.
Out of Cherokee?
Yeah. Cherokee County.
Oh, yeah, out of Cherokee County.
Cherokee Tribe.
Tribe.
No, we do not have the tower course out there, is that what you're, they do have a tower course out there, and the youth are allowed to use it, but that's not our course.
That's why I used to take them out there in Cherokee, so we were, that's where we used to, we're.
It's an Alpine Tower course as well, it's very similar, couple of difference. Ours is out in Marble, so we come, we pick up the youth from their home county and take them wherever our adventure is that week, so.
It's quite a facility, once we give them.
It's very nice, and we're still working to fix it up a little better even, so.
All right, any other questions, comments about, if not, thank you very much.
Mr. Phillips, Joey Phillips, is not able to be with us tonight, but his program, Ms. Edwards, you're very familiar with the program at the academy now, where he takes kids who are not very, are having problems in the regular school setting, and works with them more on a one-on-one type basis so that he can prepare them, ever get them back into the regular school environment. So it's a very, very important option for the school system to have. One of the things that I'd mention is how these different programs work together and how they collaborate. So we see very, very good response and collaboration from all of these different programs. And again, I appreciate your support of the program for the youth of Graham County. And at this time, I'll let June come and speak just a little bit about the overall general requirements and aspects of the JCPC.
Welcome, Ms. Ward.
Thank you, it's so nice to be with you all, thanks for having me. Well, one thing I want to say is just to piggyback on the last comment that Rick Davis made, which is about collaboration. As you know, fifty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars won't go very far. And so, three of the four programs that you serve also serve in other counties in this district. Hawthorne Heights is the only runaway shelter in the western counties, and so they serve all seven counties. And some years, Graham County needs a little temporary shelter, and in some years, they need a lot. And because it is a collaborative effort among the seven counties, they're able to meet that need in each county, regardless of the amount that each county contributes. And their agency, Barrier Springs, home for children over a hundred years old, puts in a significant chunk of money to support that temporary shelter here in this district. So, so that, and then Project Challenge also is a seven-county program. They are able to share resources among all the counties, so if you have a large number of children from this community needing to do restitution or community service, you get that service whether you have a few kids or a lot of kids. So your portion of their multi-county budget makes sure that you have what you need in those areas. And then Pay Setters, as you know, serves five counties, Macon, Cherokee, Clay, Graham, and Swain. And there's a similar program of that type in the other two counties, Haywood and Jackson. So we're very pleased about the collaboration, and I think that is one of the things, you know, necessity is the mother of all dimension. And when none of the counties has a whole lot of money to work with, you all are class-born, top-notch collaborators. And I work in two other counties that are on the Piedmont side of the western area, and the collaboration is not quite as strong there. And so I'm always proud to be in the thirtieth district where that is, that is the way that we operate in order to get things we need for children. The programs usually describe what they do, I want to tell you why they do it. They do it because the JCPC in each county looks at their own local risk and needs data for the juvenile court-involved kids. And we know that that's only a small portion of the total adolescent population that may be experiencing difficulty in Graham County. So that's why we have the local folks that are on your juvenile prevention council present. Sometimes the SRO has expertise that we don't have or doesn't show in the data. We always have good school representation, where that may not show up in the data on the juvenile court-involved kids, the things that kids need and the kinds of difficulty that they're having. The local experts that you have appointed to your council help us make, as the JCPC, the best decisions for Graham County and what you need here and what you need your programs to target. So that's why they do it, and another reason that they do what they do is that we are so far along now in social science research that we know what is effective. We used to just try things because we didn't know what worked with delinquents. And now we're so far along in the study of what works for juvenile delinquency and to turn kids from a wayward path to a more positive path, that we insist, because the legislature insists of us, that we fund effective services, effective at reducing recidivism or their likelihood of continuing to be involved in delinquency or becoming involved in delinquency. And so I'm pleased to tell you that Hawthorne Heights has a program that they use that you didn't speak about, but I'll speak about it briefly. It is moral recognition therapy. And it is not just teaching kids how to think more effectively, but how to think about the moral choices that they make. It is a twelve-step kind of program, and they do that with every child that comes their way. That is effective, it's highly effective, it's based on cognitive, the thinking, and the behavioral aspects. In addition to that, they also provide behavioral contingency planning, have a point and level system. And if you went in the house today, every child on there would have their name and the points and the levels where they're at with benefits of being in the home associated with how well they're doing. So, and that is another evidence-based service that is effective with this population of kids. So that is two of the things that they're doing there. And then our restitution program, community service and restitution, in and of itself restores the relationship that the child has disrupted by misbehaving and causing damage to the community, whether it's slamming a mailbox with a baseball bat, or whether it's slamming another kid. They've caused harm in some way, and so it's really powerful for them to not be a taker from the community, but to learn to be a giver. And so doing restitution and community service enables them to be a giver, and it enables them to learn a new way of seeing the world. And so that's, and it's effective, it's an effective, proven-to-be-effective model for working with delinquents. And it's restorative, restoring the right order to things. And then, last but not least, we have two more, both do effective services. The program that Joe Phillips does at your alternative school is tutoring and academic enhancement. Well, we know that that's important, it's also effective, it's effective in helping kids be successful at school and graduate and stay committed to school because they stay on track. But it also is effective in helping to reduce and prevent delinquency, and so it's very important. In fact, one criminologist I know said, "Teach a child to read, and you will, you will help save them from a life of crime." So Joey is meeting that need with kids now at the alternative school, and in fact, some that aren't there that maybe referred to him particularly by Sean DeBarley, the court counselor. And then last but not least, Gil Hargit's legacy, passionate about experiential education, passionate about that in the wilderness and doing challenging activities as a way to learn social skills in a way that was different and may take better. The kids have to learn that what they can accomplish in a task can be, the same skills can be transferred into their day-to-day life. And so the method of social skills training that uses the outside environment and obstacles is also an effective intervention for this population. So those are the reasons that we are so thankful that you have contributed, and we hope that your budget will permit you to continue to contribute five thousand three hundred and five dollars as your match to the fifty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-two that comes to you from the state of North Carolina. It's effective, and it's targeted to the needs you have in this community, and we are awfully proud to be able to talk to you about it tonight, and I thank you. Any questions for me? I talk fast, and I get excited when I'm talking about these programs. Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. And this will be on consideration during our budget discussions with that. Thank you very much, appreciate it, Rick and Tom. All right, this time, I'd like to ask if we have any public comment. There's not, sir. Okay, there's no one that has signed up for public comment this period. So at this time, we'll recognize Rick Campbell, county manager. We have several things we have to act on, with some discussion we're merited and wanted to do so. And also, be mindful of the staff, the year of the poll vote, that we're necessitated with some things that may translate into the community's. I'm Mike Wood.
Yes, sir, thank you. First, on the discussion items, we'll get the monthly performance status reports for the city of New Orleans, ten dash C dash two-two-three-one, as well as twelve dash C dash two-four-one-seven. The first, two-four-one-seven is the rehabilitation grant. The grant is for Scottsdale House, and we are, both houses are currently handled away. There were some issues with the footings, and that's gonna be brought forward more tonight. But the contractor seems to be on schedule, and is definitely ready to build those houses.
All right, will we have some discussion about the change orders later time then?
Yeah, yes, sir, it's, I'm rough for bids on 911 dispatch about seven minutes.
All right, thank you.
Second is grant number ten dash C dash fifty-three-one, that is Graham County Senior Center, which should be getting closed out pretty soon, I don't think, gentlemen. Seems that all the items that were on the bunch list have been taken care of, most thanks to Williams, contractor. And we're just waiting on the sign to come in to replace that up there. So everything seems to be in line there, and it's a beautiful facility.
Okay, and Greg, I'd like to throw in there, and Joan's asking about the minutes on that meeting, and those haven't been approved tonight, so we need to make sure that those get to Joan.
Okay. And I would just need to get a approval of that status report from the board, Mr. Sir.
All right, we have a motion that we accept the status reports presented on the two grants. We have a motion.
Check.
Second, any discussion, comment? Okay, all approved, all opposed, thank you.
Next, on the discussion items, we have the request to the board to accept the HCCPG grant, which is our senior services grant.
I apologize, I don't have those totals, we were out of the office this morning, I think it was a little bit of a decline.
I have the total that they submitted, it's one hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars, which is roughly about five thousand dollars less than what we were brokered last year.
Okay, and Mr. Campbell and I attended the HCCPG grant meeting at the senior citizens building with regard to this, and they're asking the board tonight for approval of that grant, and that has to do with the different type of meal, wheels on wheels, and also the.
Comedy.
Comedy meals. So it's pretty much that, so with that, any question or comment about it? That's one of those things that glad we have it. Okay, we have a motion, that we accept that grant proposal, this is given. Have a motion, second, all approved, all opposed, thank you very much.
All right, next is a request came in to appoint Chairman Mike Edwards to the Region A Partnership, Partnership for Children as a commissioner member.
You have the medical curators agreement, but we go ahead with this one. I've been asked, I was called.
Called me when I was hearing.
Okay, Commissioner Ronnie Beal has resigned from the, or should be resigned from the Region A Partnership for Children, and focused more on his upcoming term as president of the NCACC. And I was approached to fulfill that position, so I would ask the board for approval to be member of the Region A Partnership for Children.
So moved.
Have a motion, second, any discussion or comment? I'll be meeting with Ms. Edgerton tomorrow at ten o'clock.
Call your name.
All approved, all opposed, all right, thank you very much.
Graham County's got a strong representation on that one, I'm the county manager for the region through the air. Sorry about that, I was working off my old list, apparently, so I'm back on the truck here. Next would be. Next would be the acceptance of the medical director's agreement for Grand County.
All right, I see. Kim, can you give, hand me this, this sort of history of how this happened? We used to not have to pay anything.
That's correct. Duke bought MedWest out, and as they were going through all their files, excuse me for not being able to speak plainly, they realized we did not have a contract with a medical director who was over our EMS. And so when they first came to us to come up with an agreement, the cost was going to be $10,000. And we began to investigate a little bit, realized that our insurance covers the medical director. So we were able to get that agreement now to $2,000 per year. And this, we have to do this in order to maintain our EMS services for Grand County.
Okay, I think that was very good, going from $10,000 to $2,000. All right, with that, this agreement, I will sign this as approval of the board. And is this annual?
Yes.
It's annual agreement. All right, with that, we have a motion that we accept this offer. Okay, have a second?
Check.
Have a second, any question or comment? All approved, all opposed, thank you very much.
All right. My question right now, the request as done in the workshop, the request to lower the EDC board membership from nine members to seven members, which is going to help them facilitate more meetings. Seems like they have a hard time over the last two months to get more. And these are the names that are asked presented. And with the board, I understand as Andy Campbell presented in the workshop, that, you know, it may be necessary to, as terms roll off on this board, to go down to five, and allow this board to be more of a, take an active role in, in the marketing of businesses of Grand County. And do you need me to list out these names, sir?
Yeah, if you would, please, it's for record.
Okay. On record, the folks that have agreed to serve currently with the Grand County EDC board, Randy Collins, Ron Anderson, Paul Worley, Martha Phillips, Keith Rogers, Honey Ork, and Mary Bligh.
If I may, Chairman Edwards, the other two names were Jackie Ayers and Claudia Birchfield. Now that she's DSS director, she has to be removed, and so did Jackie Ayers. He has to be removed, so that, that's basically why you were going from a nine to a seven.
Make a motion to get them on the list.
Have a motion, have a second?
Check.
All right, any questions, comment? Okay, all approved, all opposed, thank you very much.
All right. Next, you have your releases and discoveries. Releases total, total amount is $2,587.32. Discoveries in the last month was $1,998.10. And a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion, have a second, any discussion or comment? All approved, all opposed.
All right, next on the list, the adoption of the no-show fees for transit, as presented in the last board convention meeting by Transit Director Juan in Calvin. The issue has been coming up substantially with transit vehicles traveling to the ends of the county and knowing there, that, for people who had requested to be kicked out, and then you had no-shows. The no-show fee proposal, which was approved by the tabloid, is $5 for the first no-show fee, $10 on the second no-show if it occurs within 30 days, $25 if a third within 60 days, and ride or ship to nine for 30 days.
Okay, I believe that that was presented to us earlier on, and how, not just the inconvenience, but the expense that takes place with it. Do we have a motion that we adopt the no-show fees for transit?
A move.
Have a motion?
Vote.
Second, any discussion or comments? Okay, all approved, all opposed, thank you.
All right, next, we need approval for, to allow Fontana Street fireworks on 4th July.
Actually, we're looking for these dates, not new-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just got the email. You've got four dates, May 3rd, 2014, July 4th, 2014, August 30th, 2014, and December 31st, 2014.
Okay.
A move.
All right, Keith, is it going to work? Burn the world down? All right, there we go.
I thought she was up there, broke apart.
Yeah, there we go. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all right, all approved, all opposed. All right, thank you very much.
All right, next, as discussed a little earlier, there'll be a discussion on approval of the change orders for the CBG Scatterside Housing grants, so.
All right, is this where we have a point of discussion on these?
Yes, sir.
All right, council, do we need to go into closed session with these with regard to, these are not contractual, but with the issue of process, how these were submitted?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, Joan, we just need some explanation, if you could, please, just take the floor. And maybe you can give us some explanation as to how, how, how all of this works.
Okay, all right. Well firstly, I guess I owe the board an apology to begin with, because on our last Scatterside Housing grant, if you will remember, Josh and I came to board, we sat in front of the tables here, and we were talking about, because y'all were conducting special meetings every night, anything happened. And so I said, well, you know, we really don't have to go through all this, because, you know, I work and I do it everywhere, and this is the only place that we do this like this. And so anyway, and I remember a board member, you know, saying, well, gosh, why didn't you tell us this? You know, so it was at that point agreed that the board would, you know, let us, you know, proceed with the project, and the county manager would update the board with the change orders, and that way, everything kept moving. And so I, I guess I was still assuming I was, it's not like the senior center. We, we have an architect in place, the county has money in that, in that building and with that grant. But with Scatterside Housing, these two homeowners, their homes are gone. We got the approval, we, they signed off, we had the, you know, where the affidavit witnessed everything, signed off, that they agreed to go through the process. Well, their houses are completely gone, and I know that on one particular change order, which was with Ross Chris, with the demolition-
You can't mention names.
It was?
I don't think we should be mentioning any names.
Well, I mean-
I mean, is that, that's the word, it's not correct.
It, it was.
I want to make sure we say that in the bounds of the word.
Right, it was, it was.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, no, I'm fine. But, and, and so we went through a whole procedure there, too. We, we sent a letter to Rowley to make sure there was no conflict of interest, because there was a bid that was lower, but, but they didn't have the insurance. They did not have the correct insurance that we needed, or it wasn't presented to us. So anyway, then that was the next bid up, so we sent the letter to Rowley to make sure, because his wife is, is on, you know, county staff, and so that there was no conflict, and we got her approval letter back, there's no conflict, and to proceed. So that's what we've been doing, and we had a small window of opportunities before another snow conflict. Snowfall came in that day that Ross called me, and we met on the Calvin side, okay? Morpheus side. And so anyway, there was a, there was a hole in her, where there was a basement that was dug out under her, under the old house, the original house. We can't, we have to fill that hole up, I mean, it's huge, but there has to be that filled up and compacted as well as possible before we can, you know, start with the construction of the new, the new home. And I know we just had a short window because there was falling snow. And I recall telling Ross, who was he? But I said, give us, you know, what is your price or what do you expect it to be? And of course he did, and it wasn't, it wasn't an outrageous amount. So that is what I am really apologizing for, because I, I was still moving forward like we did in our previous Scatterside Housing grant. And I do realize that we've gotten board vendors, and we didn't take this up at this time. But it is not like the seniors. I do want to bring that back to you, it is not like that at all. And we do have USDA funds to put with this project, but we are able to keep the project moving forward. If, we, we don't want to slow down somebody who, if we can't afford it.
Well, that brings one question to mind, Joan, and probably just one called you in particular. But you said that the USDA funds can be spent-
That, that will be, that would be spent on-
But was there restrictions, I understood that you couldn't use those funds, except-
Oh, we can't build houses with those. But we, they will, they, they can't build a whole house, you know? I mean, it's, it's not a, a complete new construction. You can contribute up to $15,000 per house when it's reconstruction. So that's the max that you can do. Well, you know you cannot build a house for $15,000. So that is the restriction now. And what we're looking at doing with the budgets is that that's going to be probably the last thing that's put in, so that we will be using all of our Scatterside Housing money. We don't want to send Scatterside Housing money back. We will use minimum USDA money, let that Scatterside Housing pay for all it can, but we will at least contribute a dollar of USDA money on each one of these houses, because that counts. And we have to do four houses, so that would be two of the houses. Now then, the other houses will be on, you know, emergency, you can do, you can do roofs, you can do wells, you can do septic, you can do, you know, all kinds of things. But you cannot rehab a home that is beyond repair, because you're supposed to be bringing these houses up to cover. You cannot put money into a, a single wide mobile home that is prior to 1978, that is not allowed. But you, you do just have to be careful about, you don't want to spend money on something that just needs to be completely, you want to help the people that... In other words, if you've got a roof that's leaking, reserve that or fix a roof so that it does not continue to, to, you know, mess up the rest of the house.
Well, I have, I have one other question, and I would run along with it. And I, I'm glad for clarification on the USDA funds, because I, I didn't realize that you could do that, because we're talking about a new construction, but-
Well, it's, it's considered reconstruction with Scatterside Housing, but $15,000 is the max that they will put in on that.
Well, a question I have with this is, is that when they came to inspect those footers, we had our local inspector to go in to pass the footers, and then we ended up with a change order in the amount of over $8,000 for the footer.
Okay, that's on that third one, that has not been processed yet, because-
The third?
That, well, the first change order was on the, the demolition, the building end of the Morpheus street side.
Okay, yeah, one of them.
Right, 1,200, we had to take in loads of dirt, we had to compact that as best we could. And so that was change order number one, and that's the only change order we had on the clearance of demolition. And I feel, you know, I remember, I, I was there, I get it, but whatever I need to do, I'll do it. But anyway, then the other change orders, the only known change orders that we will have on houses is the foundation. When we bid a house, we have to put everybody on the same level to bid, because you have to say, okay, put in your bid, we want to figure a 36-inch foundation. You don't know until you start digging that foundation out. You do not know what it's going to have to go down to, because you've got to go down the natural ground. You've got to meet certain sort tops before it will be approved through the building code. And so you can expect that, I've done this for lots, lots of houses. I think we've had one house that we did not, on that, that's going to drop. We did not have a change order on, on one house.
Well, what, what my question is, is that the footer was approved, and then all of a sudden, there's an $8,000 dollar bill?
No, the footer, no, no, it wasn't-
He had, the footer was not approved without the engineer and the extra work that went in to getting that footer up to stand. It couldn't be approved until all that work was done.
Is that how it is?
You are.
Okay, please straighten me out, forget me.
The part that you're talking about, add an additional roof.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Okay, all right.
There was nothing wrong with all of that, that's the one on.
Okay.
Joan, will you come up to this one, and I have a question?
Joan, I'm just trying to get straight time in.
Oh, I just, I, you know what, I, I've told everybody, I'll do anything this board wants.
Well, yeah.
When it's done, the procedure, if you want, however you want this done, we will do. I would be glad to, I just had the mindset of the previous Scatterside Housing grant. And I know that we have no choices as far as building up a home.
Yeah.
We have no, we have no choices.
Was in my, in my mind, was-
Three satisfactions.
Oh, yeah, I mean, for respect, there's nothing wrong with it, we just have a bill all in for change.
Right.
On our part, we didn't turn anything down.
Okay.
Didn't just have a bill for change.
Yeah.
But, but nothing-
Okay.
I mean, if I was building a house, I would not have a bill or a footer, I'd need them three.
Oh, yeah, a period section's fine, there's nothing wrong with period for a wall. At all.
Three.
And, okay, my comment on this is, I had another change order on this. I mean, I had another-
Everybody's seen one of them.
Yeah.
It's not a very big house.
Yeah.
It's not a very big house.
Well, I understand that, but.
No, it's perfectly, I've got it built.
Okay.
That's ours, but there was no changes on that stair.
There is on buildings, there was.
Well, he just had to add a few extra, my understanding, reading documentation and looking at photos is, is that there was additional block in the-
Correct, there was change.
-building, running it up well.
But then anything to the building, so.
Who approved adding a block to it?
It wasn't?
We had-
Who approved adding a block on it?
That's why I have to raise.
Well, I, what happens, I, I didn't approve anything other than that, I told Ross on that, on the demolition. But I did requisition the money, but this bill right here on the, this is on Long Branch House, it does have a change order number one for footings extra. Well, when, when a footing is inspected, and if it does not, or maybe the builder already knew to keep going down to a certain level for the, for the footing, do you know? Did you go out there one time?
Oh, no, I'm not sure.
But on just the footing?
Yeah, just the footing. It says building places on, it says. It wasn't?
You have concrete footing and then block buildup off the top of that footing.
Right. The builder, when I go to inspect it, he has the footage ready. Or if he thinks he's got trouble, he's going to call me, he's going to look at something that he, for example, Morpheus, that's where he's got another change order, because it's a bad school, he had a high water table, he had to get an engineer on it, it was just a bad site for footings. So those are change orders, the first house that you're looking at, I have nothing. But the builder, when I go on site, if he's got it ready and it passes, then I approve it, it's fine.
Okay.
But it's, it did have a change order that said on the footings extra, so it had to be the builder that determined that the footer would have to go deeper-
Correct.
-before you actually inspected, so when you went to inspect, then it passed, is that correct?
Okay, I see.
So that, that builder made that determination.
Okay, I see. I've got it in my mind, that's how that worked. But, you know, coming up to this, and then there's a change order, you know, we're putting this together, it's about $12,000, and this is the first to hear of, you know? And the board needs to sit here tonight and approve it. You see what I'm saying?
I understand, but the last change order that we had on was a 9,000 dollar change order on Morpheus, that has not been approved. Because when, you know, I did the, the first one, and I requisitioned the monies every time. So the, the second one was requisition. I do know that, that the builder said that he was going to call Andy and get Andy- Um, I do know that, um, that the builder said that he was going to call Andy and get Andy to come out and take a look at it. We talked on the telephone, but he said he was going to get the builder to come out and take a look at it. I mean, Andy to come out and take a look at it. And cable. Because that's your. Just to take a look at the, at the site because he was having to submit a change order.
Well, I guess I'm actually warning Andy to come in. I don't.
I understand.
Was it Greg?
No, Andy, Andy, you won't get in conjunction with Joan for CDB grants. That is probably what, what he's referring to.
He wanted the county first to come out besides, besides that. He wanted, I mean, he was calling David, but he wanted him to come out and take a look at it because, uh, we had been asked to work to get, you know.
That's right, reshadowing.
Yeah.
Joan, that's right.
He's, you know.
I understand that.
Okay.
Now, what side are you talking about?
Well, we're still on the, uh, Long Branch side, I mean. Okay, now, the Long Branch then has, the money has been requisitioned. There was a three thousand one hundred seventy-two dollar eighty-three cent change order on that footer. In order to get it to pass. And that builder has made that determination.
In order to get it passed, I don't know, because I had no turn on it.
I'm, I'm just getting ready to say.
Okay.
Okay. In order to get it passed, that, that builder made that determination before he called for inspection. That it would have to be a certain depth due to either soil or water or something in that not being suitable, uh, for that footer.
So this change order from the corrective action on thirty-one seventy-two was done prior to the inspector coming to inspect the footer?
Mm-hmm. I'm saying what, I'm sorry, I, I lost you.
This.
The chapter, which was before, they got that.
Yes, yes, yes. The builder made that determination because I guess from experience, that's what you do. Uh, a builder would, would know that whether it would, would be suitable or not.
Okay, there. All right. So you're saying that the eighty-two ninety-four, we're speaking now about the Morphe property?
Yeah.
Morphe Street? That's the one that has not been requisitioned yet yet?
No, it has not. No, I, after I realized and, and brought to my attention that, and I thought, oh my gosh, I'm still working over the board. But, um, you know, I, I wouldn't do anything until y'all just, just tell me what you want me to do. You know, the procedure.
I mean, we came in on the, on the, on the end of the scattered site, this new, this board, city board, with the exception of Sandra and the addition of Keith, was under the old scattered site.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Mr. Holter is the one that said, Josh, why didn't you tell us this? You know?
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm thinking in the, in those terms because I.
It might be, and I, this is just me speaking, it might be good if we could have it. And we do have these monthly, uh, these monthly meetings or before, and we have some indication about the changes in that. And that's all I need.
You know, we don't, we don't anticipate any more changes. But I can tell you this, I had a phone call this morning to ask for five change orders for one home.
Was that the builder?
At the?
No.
At the foundation level?
No, no.
So what?
Different things that they want, different things that they.
How does that happen?
I said, no. I, I said, you know, this, this board is taking, you know, having this meeting tonight concerning change orders. I will be doing what the board tells me and instructs me to do. And from what I understand, there'll be no more change orders. Other than with foundations or unless the board directs me.
Now, I was understanding that, I mean, there has to be change orders when there need to be change orders. But I, I'd like to know about, because this is twelve thousand dollars all of a sudden that we.
Well, I, I mean, the only thing.
And then my understanding about the USDA.
Well.
Then the next question was, well, where does this money come from?
We've got money, we've got money, but we want to conserve that USDA money.
Right.
And stretch it as far as we can with the scattered site. We don't want to send money back like we had to the last time because the way it was kind of, the application was moving. So, um, I just closed down the, um, two grants in another town, very close here, check again. We had twenty-seven dollars left, and that's all. We did, we did six houses, we had the same, we had ninety thousand dollars worth of USDA money. We had four hundred thousand dollars worth of Scatterside Housing money. We sent back twenty-seven dollars. That's it.
Right.
So if you, if you work with these budgets and you work, um, constructively the whole time, not just once or in a while, if you just keep massaged in that and keep stretching those Scatterside Housing dollars to where you do not have to send that money back, then you subvert it with the USDA. That, that's, that's all you do.
Well, in the instance, Joan, like you mentioned, if a, if a person having a home built comes in, like you said, they have five change order requests. That would have to be qualified under rehabilitation before that money out of USDA would be spent, right?
Well, it would have to, yeah, we want to be sure on the Scatterside Housing, so it's going to cause us to pull in USDA. These, these foundations are probably going to have causes to. But let me explain that. That, that foundation is something we cannot determine. We cannot determine that every time.
Right. And I understand that. My, my primary concern was, is yours, you know, your thirteen thousand dollars. And my understanding was that we couldn't touch the USDA funds to do that. And I was looking about how this.
What's going to happen?
Aspect, where am I going to get twelve thousand dollars to do the change order? So that's where I was coming from.
Well, I, I'm, I'm working the USDA money with the, the Scatterside Housing money. We're going to use that Scatterside Housing money, we're going to conserve that USDA money, but we are going to contribute to both of these houses, to all of your houses that you use on Scatterside Housing. Then we have to do additional houses with the USDA.
Right.
And I apologize for everything that I have done or have not done that did not meet the board's approval. But the way I see it, it, the way I interpret it, I was still thinking about the old rule not, not pulling the board or not coming to the board with each change order on the Scatterside Housing.
Well, particularly with the thirteen thousand dollars, I mean.
Well, we didn't even.
That is my concern.
When, when they are saying, we don't know. Those change orders that are thirteen thousand dollars that you're talking about right now, we didn't have a clue.
Right.
That, even if they say we've got to keep going down, if we've got to call in an engineer, it's going down too deep, then we still don't know. We still don't know until he reaches that satisfaction level.
Right.
So it, it's nothing that can be, you know, previously known in order to call the board prior to. Because the work's going to have to be done, and then you're going to get a change order bid.
Right. And I'll go ahead and say this too, Joan, I think you understood it, this board doesn't micromanage, we're not going to count it.
No, I, I understand that.
Two by four and everything else, but, you know, the issue that I faced, you know, was regarding the USDA.
Yeah, and I understand that completely. I'm sorry you got that. Because this is your first time with the USDA.
Well, there you go.
You don't, you know.
Okay.
I'm still a little confused on, okay, on the, you talk about going down. But how come the foundations are high above, right?
Okay, they're, they're having to go down deeper to get that footer, to get that footer in, which the, the foundation then goes on above. So see, if you're, if you're figuring that you're going to have that footer right here, and, and that is not acceptable, um, and you have to keep digging down and down and down, well, you figured that that block, foundation would start right here. And you're going to have to keep going down to right here because that footer's going to have to be down here now because that ground is not suitable. So you see the different levels of blocks that's going to have to be laid that has to come up?
In, in the building, you, you have your grade level. In these houses.
But I think the foundation, I just wondered about this, the height, where are you looking at?
Exactly. I mean, if, if you look at grade level, at the highest point, that house is probably sitting at three foot crossface. Well, that, that may be fine on this corner of the house. But if the grade changes or the soil's different on the back corner of the house, they may have to go down further to bring it all up here to be equal to three foot than the other side. That would be the reason why there would, would need to be additional, uh, footer work and block and.
So the grade, you would make the crossface.
Yeah, you always have to look at the finished grade on every built house. And if you establish that at three foot above, uh, above the finished grade, well, different air, different corners and areas of that site may cause you to have to dig down. Because you go from the grade level down, okay, that, that block slopes any and all. You know, it can cause there to be additional material.
I think like, what was that on the?
Joan, I have a question, one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
When they bid, when the contractor bid their house, did he give you a lump sum price on completing that house?
Yes, but that was based with a thirty-six inch foundation. We, we put, we, we told them to bid the house with a thirty-six inch foundation. And you don't, that's to put everybody bidding on the same, if you didn't stipulate that, then everybody would say, well, I just figured a two-foot foundation, I figured a three-foot, I figured a four-foot. So then you don't have any of your, you're not comparing apples to apples. You have to say specifically a certain foundation level in order to bid a price that's going to be accurate for that house.
On bid.
Yes. And then it is what it is when they start bidding.
There, there, there again. When they start preparing that footer, well, he got away with it, Inspector, you know. That's his job.
It is.
He should have been told when he hit the land with you. They all picked him up, called, "Randy, not the contractor kept a day to hook you in, stuff his head up."
Well, now, that's what happened on the first, I, I suspect that's what happened on the first one because that is, um, you know, he would have made that determination himself that that footer would have to go deeper in order. Because then when it was inspected, it did pass. So I don't know, um, you know.
I, I believe he did contact David. Did he not?
I know he did on the other one.
The indication of the contractor was is that, that, that he kept, that you came out and there was extra dirt. And come out, it wasn't what it said.
Yes, the second.
You did.
Now, you're on long branch. I didn't know that at all.
Yeah, I, I think it's more of Morphe is what the discussion is because it's, it's the more substantial.
I don't know where there is, is why the foundation's so high to come down Long Branch? You know, Long Branch is about what, six, seven, eight block.
When we took that house down, the back of that house was on the ground. It literally, the long, the, the back porch was on the ground. The front of it, it had, you know, I think maybe five, maybe four or five floor. But the back was on the ground. And we did have, you know, the four or five inches.
But I think it's important though, too, that the building inspection department, they characters fully on that. I mean, that's what I'm saying. So when you actually held the job, however you, the builder decides to go up, essentially you got to sign up for it.
Well, but we just got to get it to a pass at inspection. I mean, it's got to pass. But I'm not saying no, I, I haven't told the builder anything. I haven't told him anything. Other than to bid the job as a thirty-six inch foundation. Now, when he starts digging that footer and it's not suitable, he's made that determination that that is not, he probes it. And if it's not a certain, um, I guess hardness, then, then he keeps going down.
Well, I think we would be right though, we didn't ask for it on that. Did he actually make the bid? I don't know.
It's a little bit different than what we are accustomed to with our contractors, like Billy. When they bid a job, there's tons of unknown. But they have to deal with what's there, and I think that's what Billy was referring to. And it, and it's included in their bid. You know, they may make money, they may make less money, they may make more money, but the bid's a bid. That's, that's.
I heard.
Okay, with that, we need to move along with this. Is there any other question or comment for, for Joan? And, and I want to understand too, that tonight we're being asked to take action on, on two, um, change orders. So we're going to be on three, on three change orders.
I'll make motion, leave the change orders.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second? Is that a second, is? Okay, fails for a motion. We'll have to have further conversation about it. What's the deadline on it?
We got a, we have got a requisition out there, I mean, we don't have a requisition. The, two of these, the Chris, the demolition.
Right.
That's already been done. This one too, on Long Branch, uh, for the footings, has been done. It's three thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars. Okay? The, um, nine thousand dollar one, or eight, whatever it is, that third one.
Eighty-two hundred.
On Morphe Street, has not been requisitioned, has not, I'm waiting on the board.
But the work's been done.
But the work has been done. They haven't been an engineer to do the work. I mean.
So, just so you're clear.
Oh, that's the, is everything, everything legal and everything right? As far as the building inspection department, everything is done, okay. As far as change orders, I haven't included it.
Right, I understand that. The board knows everything else. If, if everything they've done is right.
To this day, both foundations are, are approved.
And the funds for the change orders come from the USDA funds and not the county?
No, they will not come from the county's funds. They, we, we will use grant money to.
Right, that's what I said.
Yeah, exactly.
That's from the USDA.
Exactly.
The, the county won't be responsible. We'll, we'll not take that parent money.
No, sir.
Absolutely not. We've got sufficient funds to take care of this.
Okay, will it be over and above the funds that you had allocated for that particular building? Are the fees, change orders over and above what was allocated for the buildings initially?
Well, you know, the bid was eighty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and some odd cents. Then these change orders are definitely going to change that amount of money for the end result of that. Uh, but we do have the thumbs between the USDA and the Scatterside. It will not, it will not affect the, um, the counties.
Will it take away from like emergency repair to other?
Well, we're going to have to have, we're going to have to make up that money. You know, if you had planned on contributing, say, five thousand dollars to each one of these projects of USDA money, um, then you're going to have to, um, now you're looking at contributing eighty-nine thousand dollars to one project in, in order to, to get that done.
These two houses has got to be the.
They, I mean, they're, they're damaged. They're, you have no choices, but it's something that we can't determine.
Okay.
That's right.
What I'm looking at here is the, the price on the one on Morphe Street. It's fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. And then the other one, on Long Branch, is nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine, sixty-two. And then, uh, the company that done the demolition is a thousand six hundred fifty.
Yes, that was to fill in. But, um, the change order.
Now, we're giving, I was understanding, this is three and six and eights.
That's for three and six.
I'll look at that amount for this.
No, you're looking at three thousand and, and what is the, the change order amount on that?
Eighty-two ninety-five.
Okay, and then the twelve fifty. Those, those are change orders that were not figured, you know, when this bid was.
So the twenty-three thousand plus the twelve fifty is not the accurate figure you're asking to be changed? Like Keith said, there's one for nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine, sixty-two.
No, 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 it's, it's the change order amount, three thousand one seventy-two, eighty-four.